F six P L nineteen seventy five C two thirty one S one amended two thousand and six. In seventy S two, the Asbury Park Board Education has provided added notice of this meeting by sending the notice of the time, date, location, and today's set known the agenda of this meeting. Today, I've referred press the coaster on January eighth, twenty twenty one via email copies of this notice have also been placed in the administration building bulletin board district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department and filed with the city clerk on January eighth, twenty twenty one. Submission statement of Asbury, the Asbury Park School District is is to provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and characters to succeed in a diverse evolving global society. Roll call please, Mr. Hastings.
Okay, we'll take roll. Please remember to unmute and then remute yourself. Ms. Chavez Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Breach? Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Grillo? Mr. La Raca?
Here.
Mr. Remi? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski?
Here.
Ms. Etienne?
Here.
Um, roll, um, stand for the plaque, please.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'm complimented. All right, we're going to start with the committee reports. Uh, Mr. La Raca, you ready?
Sure. Uh, ours is very brief. We spent, uh, our finance committee meeting just, um, prepping for the presentation to the board about the budget. Just to remind everyone through through some, uh, really well done yearly management of the budget, we're able to have significant reductions in, uh, make our or meet our significant reduction in aid through, uh, reorganization of positions that were vacant because of resignation, uh, and or retirement and being able to, uh, save money and roll over, uh, monies toward the fiscal year twenty twenty two. I think we have uh, on the agenda tonight, probably the one position that is currently filled that is, um, being reduced. Um, but that concludes the report for finance. Um, oh, we need to then just discuss if we're going to do as a board, if you wanted to do that kind of a community Zoom meeting off of that presentation a little bit, I could put that together and we can, uh, Barb and I can jump back to that and do that in April or May.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea and actually the sooner the better. So April looks better to me than May.
Should should we throw out a tentative date and see if people have a problem right now?
Sure. You want to do it midweek, end of week?
Uh, probably which for me is better.
I'm sorry?
Um, week is better for me than end of week.
You want to try the twelfth? How's it? It's before a regular meeting. What do you think?
Uh, maybe not, uh, Monday could be a bad go Tuesday, the thirteenth.
Um, Jeff just reminded me that we pushed back our April twenty second meeting what by one week. Do you want to just take that slot up?
Oh, okay. Yeah. So so our April twenty second was pushed.
It's on the it's on the fifteenth now, Jeff?
No, the window for adopting the final budget is, uh, roughly April twenty fourth to like May seventh. Our meeting was scheduled for the twenty second, so that doesn't fit the window. Uh, so we were changing our meeting to the following Thursday, which was the twenty ninth.
Okay, let's. Yeah, that's a good idea then, that we know people, at least among the board, probably have that. We can confirm that and and we have to do, uh, you have to do formal notice?
Yes, if we're going to have a town hall meeting, we'll need to notice that because we'll have a farm.
When when do we? I mean, I think we count on this, but when would be the drop date to put out the note? Do we confirm it by early next week?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay.
You would just need forty eight hours notice.
Okay.
So Dom, you want to do it the twenty second, you said?
Yeah, I I think that's a good idea. Can you do that, Barb?
You want to do it this at seven o'clock?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do what would have been a meeting. And then you and I can check for. Thank you.
Tom, Tom, I had a question for Dominic.
Yeah.
Did you discuss an update on the Obama, uh, move through your committee meeting?
Yeah. No, the the last the last committee was just with regard to the budget presentation for finance.
Barb, Barb, can you try to reach Connie? She's on the wrong, um, link.
That's what I called.
I'm trying to call her. She didn't pick up my call.
Dominic, we also discussed at Buildings and Grounds, the, uh, move to, uh, Obama. So we can handle that in that report.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Yeah, because I'm I'm not on that one now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or statements? All right, we're going to move to curriculum and instruction.
Sorry. Okay, so we're doing a recommended board approval for the STEM summer program, uh, to run from July sixth, uh, twenty twenty one, sorry, to August, um, at the Bradley Elementary and Third Good for pre K to second. Uh, the staffing hours be Monday through Friday, eight A M. to one P M. And students will be there from Friday, eight thirty to one, uh, twelve thirty. Uh, the cost will be one nine nine thousand hundred dollars. Um, and a recommended board approval for the T L A A summer program to run from July sixth, uh, to August, twenty twenty one, and M A K and high school sites for grades three through eight. Um, staffing will be from eight to one, and the students will be there from eight thirty to twelve thirty, and that's approximately fifty four thousand, four hundred and thirty six, a hundred. And then a recommended bill approval for the buyback slash credit recovery summer program, uh, from July through August. Uh, the staffing hours be from eight to two, and our students will be there from eight thirty to one thirty, and that's, um, estimated is at fifty thousand. And lastly, um, the board approval for Asbury Park, um, to cooperate with the, sorry, I'm going to totally pronounce wrong. Keywars Garden Program Project from May to July. Um, basically want to empower our students to make a healthy choices and discover talent in a, um, engaging and safe environment. Um, that's basically it. Oh, I'm sorry. The T L A program, the top school program for grades three to eight with no cost of additional.
Now, um, the last time we talked, somebody was going to meet with us and we find out about rec. Did we did we get an update about rec?
Yeah, we met with rec on, uh, early this week, um, and, um, we're co-op, we're kind of a joining forces, I guess. Um, so they're going to start their program right after ours is over, kind of like we've always done in the past. So our lunches will cross over with one another. So that way when the students, they want a full day program, they come to our program, they'll get a discount to to go to the rec program, get part of our program, and then they can just continue their day from there.
Okay, now, I know that rec on Fridays used to do a whole day because they did trips and stuff like that. How is that going to mesh with our our program from eight or twelve? So, um, so when we met with the rec, uh, we talked about the sequencing of our program, how it intertwined with their program. They have obviously not had this in person programmatic experience before, so it's new to them. They have questions about transportation, what that potentially looks like, um, during a time where we are socially distancing. So, um, the Director of Curriculum Instruction offers some ideas to them about local trips that they might want to consider because they are concerned about the bus, being on the bus for extended periods of time. They did say that they would get back in touch with us to talk to us about what that can look like. So they left with a lot of ideas around, um, how they can still make it work, how they can still offer a full service program. They also are going to continue with providing scholarships. They have provided, um, and many times very anonymous, in a very anonymous kind of a way, uh, because certain families and their experience has been people don't necessarily want that kind of attention. So they will continue to partner with us. And as Mr. Ruiz talked about, the reduction, uh, or trying to give a discount to students that attend our program, um, and theirs, so that's that full day, but also, um, they will continue to give scholarships as they have done in the past, but which we're very appreciative because a lot of our families will otherwise not be able to participate in the afternoon portion. So we're working seamlessly on trying to on trying to integrate the recreational piece, but make it enrichment so that students who also have been impacted by the pandemic get something extra. You know what I mean? So it's not just all splash and water break. Does anyone need clarification on what we're talking about? Is there any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Cook. Um, Buildings and Grounds, Jeff, do you mind doing that?
I did, uh, I did have a question, but it didn't have to do with, uh, what we discussed curriculum. It was something I kept forgetting to ask about. Maybe Ms. Gray can elaborate on it. There was a program announced in the local newspapers and a s- a summer entrepreneurship, a business academy, that they were offering scholarships to juniors and seniors.
Are you talking about the, um, apprenticeship program, the New Jersey?
Yeah, I I just, we never, we never talked about it. I thought it was a good idea, and I just wondered if you could elaborate a little bit about it, so, uh, you know, the public knows about it, too.
Right. So that's an apprenticeship program that we're, uh, thankful, uh, with Dr. Howard Morris's leadership and Dr. Uh, excuse me, and Principal Baumgartner. They, uh, received information, Dr. Howard Morris facilitated a meeting. I'm going to ask Dr. Howard Morris, who's on, if she could get more into the granular details and explain that.
Okay, so, uh, program, the same program that we talked about with the New Jersey Manufacturers Program, that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, so, uh, basically, uh, the New Jersey Manufacturers Program, um, came to us and said they have two certification programs our students to, um, to be involved with. What they would have to do is, uh, is is module based, so they would go online, they would can, um, go through eighty to a hundred hours, um, in a class, and once they, uh, complete that, um, that class, they will receive, um, a certification, um, logistics, and the other certification would be in production. And once they've completed the certification, they, um, the program will find them jobs, um, that, you know, they can do. Now, in addition to that, they also, um, if they continue on with that program, they'll, um, once they graduate, they will continue to get them other certifications. So if they go into like logistics or something like that, they can, um, learn how to, um, get certification in forklift and other jobs that have to do with manufacturing. So, um, it's only, uh, for seniors. We have fourteen seniors right now that signed up that will be starting that program, um, next week.
Thank you, Dr. Howard Morris, for your leadership on that and forward the reporting out. At the request of Madam President, we were fortunate to, um, be able to place that that story in the coaster for which Madam Vice President has secured a location for the district in the coaster paper. So, um, if you're looking for more information on that in that article, that's where you can find it. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, um, let's move on to Buildings and Grounds. Adam wasn't there and Anthony's not here. Jeff, can you please say?
Sure. Uh, Buildings and Grounds met, uh, March eleventh. There were two facility use requests. One was from Asbury Park Little League. Um, and they are moving forward with the, uh, season for the kids. And the second request was from A seven F L. That's the Full Contact Notepad Football League that played, uh, at our stadium approximately two or three years ago. Uh, they are looking again to use the stadium as a central spot for the league. Um, and they've agreed to pay fees and will provide insurance and and the other things that we need to to move forward with that application. Uh, the committee was reminded that we are not moving forward at this point with the bids we received for the, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Upper Elementary, uh, School Elevator Repair. The bids came in significantly above the estimate provided by the architect, so that will be, uh, canceled and rebid at a later time. Uh, we talked about the central office relocation and, uh, administration's been in contact with Bond Council regarding financing of the improvements. Uh, we've talked about the timeline with the architect, uh, who expressed some concern about the availability of mechanical or HVAC equipment, but otherwise thought we could, uh, meet the, uh, deadline, uh, imposed by the lease we have here at nine ten. Uh, the landlords of nine ten, after listening and sitting in on our last meeting, uh, then requested a meeting with us as well to talk about options and some ideas they had to perhaps, uh, have the board office stay here, uh, under some different, um, options. So, uh, we await their response and we'll provide that information, uh, when it comes forward. Uh, and then the other, uh, issue we talked about was our ESIP, our Energy Savings Improvement Plan, and that is moving forward to a filing with the B P U, and, uh, we'll be looking at the next steps to take to, uh, continue to move that project forward. Thank you. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, no questions or comments? We'll move on to policy. Joe, please.
Hi, everyone. So, uh, with policy, um, we had, uh, we had our meeting on March eleventh. The committee noted the first reading at, um, at the February meeting on all the policies. We had some minor language changes that were made via Strauss S M A on, um, the E S S A language that, uh, or for policy and regulation twenty four fifteen. So instead of, uh, N C L B language, it's E S S A language being used. And, um, all the policies and regulations are ready for for a second reading. Uh, there was, uh, some added policy for state healthcare insurance coverage waiver payments. Uh, that's part of the legislative audit recommendation. And then we also spoke about, um, we wanted to get more information on, uh, an alert on the grading policy. Um, so we're going to be, we're going to, I'm going to review that, um, with the curriculum committee to see if it if it makes sense. So, um, and that's about it.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on policy? All right. Um, Barbara, are you going to be able to take athletics for Connie?
Uh, sure. Um, she's still trying to get on. Um, athletics, we talked about two possible new programs that we could introduce to the, um, students. One is rowing, not the rowing out in the water, but rowing as a, um, means of exercise in whether it's introduced in gym class or as a club. Uh, there's a resident in our community that is a certified instructor, and she's a proponent of rowing for health reasons. And then the other, um, item we discussed is, uh, there are a couple of individuals who want to see if they can raise some funding to resurface the middle school tennis courts, so we can start, um, you know, introducing tennis again to our students and also utilizing it, uh, for the public. So those are two conversations that we are in the process of, um, you know, vetting, and we'll have a better a better idea next month after our athletic committee meeting and and give a report to the board. Um, I'm sure Mrs. Gray may have some additional, um, information on that. But besides that, I think, um, you know, the sports are beginning, and I'm not sure if there was anything else on it. I don't have the, uh, minutes in front of me.
Okay, thank you. You think we should do a a survey of interest about the rowing with the students?
Oh, most definitely. Um, I I think that's something that, uh, even even if we introduce, if it's introduced in the curriculum in, uh, gym class, that it's something that, uh, students can learn or even, you know, as a addition to the weight room to cross train.
Okay. Any additional questions on athletics? All right. Um, thank you, everybody, for your committee reports. Um, right now, we will open the public participation portion of our meeting. Um, if you have any questions, please email them or you can call in, at which time you have three minutes. Please state your name fully and your address.
So in order to use the phone for the call in, please hit star three on your phone, and that'll put you into the queue. Uh, we have the public comments at asburypark.k twelve dot N J dot U S, as well as the chat or Q and A feature here on the software. So we'll give a minute for folks to queue up and then move into the Q and A. Okay, Mr. Brannigan, do we have any callers or any, uh, questions in the queue?
At this time, no one has raised their hand or chatted in the, uh, chat room.
Okay, we have no emails to our public common post office address here, email address?
Okay, um, so we'll close the public participation portion of our meeting, six thirty. At this time, we'll have a review of our agenda items. Stand, stand.
Sure, on the business office agenda, uh, I would note on page C two, donation, uh, to our, um, students of seven gift cards with an estimated value of a hundred and five dollars. Again, that's number six on page C two. We are reviewing and, uh, reapproving our first aid manual for nurses and physicians, and the manual has been reviewed by both parties and the district doctor. Uh, we're renewing our agreements with Mammoth Ocean Ed Services Commission to help us manage our one ninety two and one ninety three, uh, specialized services, as well as our non-public nursing. And we are, uh, adding two vehicles, two district vehicles that are not repairable to our disposal list. Uh, and one of the things you see annually around this time of the year is our participation agreements, which is item thirteen on C four. And as a reminder, those are contracts that the Asbury Park School District, our Information Technology Center, has with other school districts to provide, uh, accounting services and payroll services to those districts. Be happy to take any questions you may have at this point.
Hey, Jeff, I have a question about the vehicles. When they're put into the disposal list, is that, uh, is that kind of like the vehicle version of of cutting by attrition? Like, is there any money saved from that or or any kind of savings?
Uh, well, you could, um, you could look at it two different ways, I suppose. You can look at it as we're saving money and that we have two vehicles that were aging and we're in need of constant repair, so we're not spending funds on, uh, on on those repairs. However, we do have to evaluate the need for vehicles, uh, should we need to replace maybe one of those vehicles. Um, I believe one of them uh, is a dump truck, which is, uh, a vehicle that's used quite often in the district for various services. Um, and that may need to be replaced. So, uh, yes, we're saving money in terms of getting away from inefficient and costly repairs. However, out of the other pocket may come funds needed to purchase a new vehicle. And just to clarify, we'll put these on our disposal list, and then from there, we'll put an ad in the paper, uh, for any interested parties to buy them as is.
What what was the other vehicle? One was a dump truck. What was the other one?
I believe the other one was just a, uh, short pickup, a Dodge Dakota, two thousand and one.
Great, thanks.
Um, are there additional questions or comments? Madam Superintendent, you want to go over your agenda? You know what I mean?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Do you have, are there any questions regarding any items on page B one? Numbers one and two, A through D? Any question regarding items on B two? B three? No, it's the, can you, um, could we talk about this a little bit, that we were still in the public? Oh, no, never mind. Then, B four? B five?
I've got one on B four.
Yes.
Um, I I was a little unclear from our discussion about positions, that coordinator of funded programs, uh, Mr. Burnix, uh, retiring. Will we fill that or or are we trying to provide those services, uh, in a different way?
Uh, as part of being fiscally responsible and understanding the financial implications for the district, uh, we will not be hiring someone to replace that position, and we're going to look to distribute those responsibilities throughout the existing staff.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions with regard to items on B five? B six? And any attachments? Nope. Okay, at this point, um, you have a, right?
Uh, in, uh, at the seven o'clock. But, um, I I was going to be reporting out on Q S A. I did send attachments.
Okay, so you want to do the report now?
So we have time, we have time. It's up to you.
Okay, so, uh, Madam Superintendent has a a report that we can do now instead of waiting till seven o'clock. Is everybody in favor of that?
If that's permissible, Adam, but it's like, it's not on here. It's on here for the seven o'clock.
It's on for the seven. Is that a problem, Adam, that we do it now?
Look, um, my concern is that if someone looked at the seven o'clock agenda, uh, and they wanted to weigh in on the topic, if we do it now, they, um, they may not have the opportunity to to hear it, the issue, uh, and to weigh in on it. So my suggestion would be that we hang on to that until seven o'clock, just so that if anyone was planning on hearing it, participating, they can do so.
Okey dokey.
Okay, um, ma'am. Uh, with regards to the Q Sac report, it's not, it's not a full blown presentation. It is literally attachments that have been forwarded to you. So um in the interim, if you want to check your email from Myla Lopez, she has the placement letter and the subsequent additional documentation. Typically, we do not share the entire packet that goes along with it. You just kind of just get the placement letter. But um as has been made clear, that the board's uh position would be to see all of the supporting documentation. You have all of that now uh for your review. And what I will do is, at the seven o'clock meeting, then I will just report out on the placement letter uh and where we stand in terms of the percentage. We only had two areas in Q Sac anyway that were reviewed.
Okay, um, so at this time, I would like um a motion to close this meeting and we'll come back at seven?
I'll move it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, see you later at seven.
We're gonna go on mute and we'll see you at seven.
On this same, same link, so you want to turn off your camera and just mute your mic if you don't want to sign back in.
Okay, thank you.
Still evacuated.
Are you?
Yeah, they evacuated us from the downtown and um so I'm I'm coming to you live and direct from the Asbury Hotel.
Oh, I'm stuck because they brought us back.
And some of the buildings, no. Actually, they just called us back now, but in the middle of a meeting, I'll go back after the meeting, so.
Okay, because I mean, we had the shaking. We had a little bit of the shaking and then it was like a half an hour and he told us to come back.
Yeah, it was, well, they they just closed off the street again, so there's fire trucks there again, so hopefully everything will be okay.
Yeah, they weren't allowing vehicles on all day, but um.
Yeah, my lobby is not this big.
Okay, so we're gonna start. In accordance with the provision of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA ten four dash six, PL nineteen seventy-five, C two thirty-one S one amended two thousand and six, C seventy S two, Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending notice of the time, date, and locations and to the extent on the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the New Booster, on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Via email copies of this notice have also been placed in the administration building bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the Asbury Park City Sheriff on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. The mission of the Asbury Park School District is to provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diversity-evolving global society. Roll call, please, Mr. Hastings.
Ms. Anderson? Ms. Breach?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Mr. Lauteracher?
Here.
Mr. Remy? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Ms. Tien?
Here.
Let's please stand with flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, is there a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, our first presentation is going to be our student safety data system PIB report by Dr. Kristi Howard Morris.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We do this twice a year. Um, the period for which I'm going to present tonight is going to be for um the periods of September two thousand and twenty to December two thousand and twenty, December thirty-first. So I'm just waiting for Mr. Hastings to pull it up. So this is our first reporting period.
Mr. Brannigan, can you move? Thank you.
And like I said, this is the period of the first reporting period for the school year two thousand and twenty-one, which covers the period of September two thousand and twenty to the end of December of two thousand and twenty. So um as you probably can um guess, there are no incidents because students were rarely at the school from um September to December. So we have um no incidents. Let me just go back. Incidents uh is described as um um everything else. So other incidents are described as vandalism, violence, vandalism, and those types of occurrences. Other, the category of other is um any other suspensions, in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, and any other um discipline, uh disruptive behavior that occurs in school. Yeah. So it's just a comparison, but again, I don't really under, know how um helpful it's going to be because um this year, as you can imagine, we didn't have any incidents. But this is school thousand, um, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, when we looked at the peer, the first period, which covers September to December, uh, we had uh the high school fifteen incidents, eleven um other incidents, um four at MLK uh incidents, um fourteen other. Um, and Barack Obama, we had zero incidents, four other. Bradley, we had ten incidents and one other. In Thurgood Marshall, we had seven incidents and two others. And we had, I'm sorry, and we also had three heads at Barack Obama and none at the other schools. Again, the comparison, um, at the high school, we had fifteen incidents uh last year this period and none this year. We had eleven um other and we had zero this year. And we had zero hips last year and we had zero this year as well. Last year at um Dr. Martin Luther King, we had four incidents and this year we have none. We have fourteen other and zero this year and zero hips last year and zero this year. Bradley Elementary, we had ten incidents last year this period and none this year. Uh, we had one other category last year and we have zero this year. We had zero hits this period last year and we have zero this year. Thurgood Marshall, last year we had seven incidents for period one. We have zero this year. We had two for period one last year. We have zero this year. We had zero hips last year and zero this year. And again, every year I do the three-year comparison of district totals. Um, two thousand eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, we had twenty-four incidents. Two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, we had thirty-six incidents and this year we had none. Last year we had fifty-seven other category. Um, excuse me, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, we had fifty-seven. Last year we had thirty-two and this year we have none. Two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, period one, we had six heads. Last year we had three heads and this year we have none. And as you can imagine, we have, for period one, we had zero suspensions district-wide. That concludes my um report. Anyone have any questions?
I have a comment.
Sure.
Um, I would imagine that all school districts are going to have substantial decrease in uh violence and vandalism this year because of COVID and also uh harassment, intimidation, or bullying unless they find something on uh virtual. Uh, so what are they gonna do with these statistics? Are they gonna keep them or are they going to kind of make it a mute year?
Well, there, as long as we have to um provide the documentation, they keep them. I mean, what they decide to, you know, how relevant it is to them, I don't know. Um, but you know, some school districts, there are actually hips going on, virtual, a lot of them going on. Um, this, thank goodness, our children haven't, you know, haven't been harassing each other online, but there are a lot of hips going on in other school districts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Okay, Madam Superintendent has a presentation?
Yes, Madam, Madam President, I think Connie has joined us.
Okay, good evening, board members. Um, as I shared uh briefly in the workshop, the Q Sac report has come back and you should have received in your email not only the placement letter, but the supporting documentation that goes along with it for your review and or interest. I know in the past that has been a request and so I made sure in advance now you have all of the letter and supporting documentation there. This Q Sac report was uh, as they call a mini because of the areas where um improvement was necessary. So the two areas where improvement was necessary was with regard to instruction and programs. Anytime there's a score below eighty percent, it is necessary for us to create an action plan. And so because our score was uh significantly low during the initial placement, May twenty twenty, uh with regard to personnel, that is why personnel was added to the Q Sac, um, was added in as a part of Q Sac. As it relates to instruction and programs, um, the determinant for us to get to that eighty percent is also based on standardized test scores. So we know that the NJSLA was not administered, as well as uh we have been making significant literacy level gains, but to see and have that actualized on our state performance assessment data is something that we continue to work toward, seeing those growth, that grow. But uh the absence of the assessment during the pandemic does not allow for us to have any of that data to report out. So what you see on the letter from Q Sac is initial placement at seventy-two percent and it's kind of just frozen at the seventy-two percent because there's nothing additional to add. But what I do want to share with you is, since my time in the district, this is the highest rating we've ever received for Q Sac. Our state, um, our executive county superintendent, Dr. Richings noted that uh he has not seen a rating like this before uh in the Asbury Park School District and noted that the only reason why we're not seeing increased growth in that area is tied specifically to our standardized test scores because every other indicator that influences that metric has been satisfied uh to the Department of Education's satisfaction. So uh while it's very brief, this is why I said it's not PowerPoint or anything like that, uh while it's very brief, that is the update on Q Sac and you have the additional documentation. Any questions? Yes?
Um, I've, I don't have a question. I have a comment. I want to congratulate the uh your, you and your staff for the personnel gains uh now that it's sixty-five percent in May of two thousand and twenty and now a hundred percent in February of this year. I think it was a lot of work, a lot of hard work. And um I think I, everybody should be commended for um their ability to turn this around.
Thank you for noting that, Vice President. Um, again, there was significant work, as you have outlined, that went into this. When we received the rating that was so low, I talked to the board then about a corrective action plan and a full and comprehensive audit of that department. That work was led by Dr. Adams and his entire team. And then in collaboration with Dr. Adams and the other executive administrative staff, we were able to get a hundred percent. And it was definitely a lot of work by a collective group of individuals. So thank you for that acknowledgement. Any additional questions or comments? Madam Superintendent, do you have an additional report?
Yes, uh, so now I'm gonna transition over to the data dashboard, which was included in your uh in your packets. In the data dashboard, you'll see a comparison of enrollment trends. We've had conversations with you. I've had conversations, very specific ones, uh concerning the decline in our enrollment. And so I just kind of wanted to give you a graphic so you can look at the trend lines because just to say the enrollment is declining doesn't tell enough of the story. And so what I wanted you to be able to see is the specific grade spans. And um while we are talking about an enrollment, we have no uh decline, we have noticed in three grade levels, that is not just necessarily the case. So if you're looking at the blue bar, the blue bar represents, if you have it in color, the blue bar represents this school year. If you don't have it in color, the bar that is the farthest to the left is blue and the bar that's farthest to the right, which is green, represents school year twenty, uh, represents March fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, which is when this report was run. And I just want you to note that in grade six, nine, and twelve, we are seeing um an increase in enrollment. And I think that uh that was important information for you to understand here and know because specifically in twelfth grade, we see a major increase there over the previous two years. And so that is um, that lends to having more conversation about where we are noting growth and what we have in place um that makes our students and their families really interested in the programs. So with regard to the data dashboard, are there any questions there?
I I just had a question about pre-K. Um, the significant downturn in pre-K is, I would imagine that's because of the COVID issue and sending kids to school.
Yes, um, and right, so some discomfort still remains within our student population in terms of returning for a full in-person program experience.
But it's also a national trend.
Could there be some, could there be some issue, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Could there be some issue with the virtual that the children?
It's a, it's a national trend with pre-K and with kindergarten. It's been a national trend that um those kids are not returning back to school immediately.
To Madam President's point, some of that trending is because pre-K and kindergarten are not compulsory, right? It's not, it's not mandated. So that has some impact on what we're seeing. But the larger part of this conversation, and to lend some context to this, is that uh nationally, there is a downward trend in enrollment in all schools because of having been in this pandemic space. And so this is where we continue to, and I want to commend Dr. Howard Morris and her team for working with the other directors in the district to ensure that we constantly are putting eyes on the students for whom we have registered in our district. We have a lot of ancillary staff. The spec, the social and emotional learning interactive newsletter that's come from her office and in conjunction with the curriculum and instruction department really kind of outlines for the families, the comprehensive supports that we have in the district, who those individuals are. And because it's electronic, they have links where they can go into other areas and directly um be connected with the resources that they are in such, so, so great of a need right now.
um be connected with the resources that they are in such, so, so great of a need right now. So, um, that is something that I'm sure we'll see a lot of research on in the future. The next item for my discussion with you is with regard to.
Can I, I just had one other comment I just wanted to make. When you look at these graphs, I think it's to our advantage to look at the difference between two thousand twenty and nineteen, to see what the trend is as the grades move up. Because some of the trends actually are, are the same when they move up a grade and some do go down, some go up. So I, I didn't know if you could give any kind of um data on that, following the grades and see whether the numbers stay the same or move up and down.
Right. So we continue to look at that and look at and for supporting documentation to help lend some context to that because, as you will note and recall, the red bar is when we were immediately had to pivot into the lockdown. All right, and so there is some impact there from last year. Any other questions regarding the data dashboard? Okay, seeing as though there's none, the other comment I, I want to share with you is with regard to sustainable jersey. We were very fortunate to have been Bradley Elementary School, to have been awarded a two thousand dollar sustainable grant, Sustainable Schools Grant. And um, we're delighted that they have applied. It's uh in collaboration with the New Jersey Educational Association. So our teachers' union in conjunction with Sustainable Jersey at Bradley Elementary School will be awarded a grant. And that grant can be used for a myriad of things, which include outdoor classroom spaces, aquaponics, food production, water bottle refilling stations, which we have uh in place already, anti-bias training, school wellness programs, waste reduction, student green team capacity building, and more. So we're very delighted to have been a recipient of the Sustainable Jersey Grant.
That's terrific.
And um, the teachers that took the initiative to apply for that grant are to be commended as well as our teachers' association. And then the other thing I want to mention, which is um, one of the things that brings me a lot of joy, if there's any joy to be gleaned from this being in this pandemic during COVID nineteen is the fact that now vaccinations are available and have been made available for educators. I was very fortunate to be able to secure vaccinations and offer that for our district staff. Through a partnership with the BNA, to date, we have ninety-six staff members that have signed up. Ten are awaiting additional, uh, ten are awaiting a vaccination. And eighty-six have already been vaccinated in our district. So I'm uh extremely delighted to know that our staff, when, uh, when they are provided with these resources, are extremely appreciative and take full advantage of those offerings. That completes uh my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President.
Um, at this point, we'll be uh opening the floor for uh public participation. You can either email in a question or comment, or you can call in. And when you call in, you just have to state your name. You have three minutes. State your name and your address. You have the question number three still?
Yes, if you want to use a uh, the phone, you hit star three and you'll be put in a queue. Or you can use the chat or Q and A feature on our uh WebEx software. We'll give it a moment for any callers to queue up. Something different. Okay, at this point, we have no emails that have been sent to our public comment uh email box. Mr. Branigan, do we have any callers or anything in the uh comments or Q and A?
At this time, there are no comments and uh no one has raised their hand.
Okay, seven.
We do have a question, it looks like, from Ms. Maureen Casey. Her comment is, when will we be back uh in person as a board?
In person? Uh, we don't know yet. Um, we're, we're following the, the health or trends and um the modifications on when to wear masks and proximity. Right now, I think it was reduced to pre-K. Uh, so we're, we're following that. I, I see maybe in the next couple of months, depending on um, what the COVID trends look like. Any additional questions? No? Okay.
Mr. Branigan, uh Branigan, any other comments or questions?
Like, I have a question. Can you hear me? Can anybody hear me? Yes, no?
Yes, Connie.
Okay, um, this is great. Um, the question I have is that, that has been asked of me after spring break. What is our plan of action? Are we going to uh remote, hybrid, uh full in-person? Uh, I guess is some of the um residents after spring break, the people travel from different states? Are we going to that issue as it comes?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Breach for the question. Um, yes, so I was awaiting a response and uh opportunity to listen to the governor's message yesterday. Um, additionally, the CDC guidance that we have received and the guidance that we have received from our local health department is such that um ultimately, the CDC has shared ten days as a quarantine, but our local health department would like for us to strongly consider in staying in line with the fourteen day. That is the recommendation from the Monmouth County Health Department. Because while the CDC is federal, the Monmouth County Health Department is also looking very closely at what's happening locally. And because of the numbers that they are seeing locally, their guidance is fourteen days. And so as a result, after we have our spring break, I was in consultation with Madam President regarding um the new guidance that has been uh shared. We will have a fourteen-day virtual, full virtual immediately after spring break, which would have us arriving back into school on April twenty-sixth. For the back to the hybrid in-person instruction, because it's butted up right against spring break. To your point, the concern, uh, we were very intentional and very deliberate in our review of that. But as you shared, the concern is with regard to travel, knowing that people will be traveling and looking at our data in the county, this makes it the most sense and it's the most prudent. Are there any additional comments?
Mr. Branigan, any other questions or comments?
Uh, no one has raised their hand at this time.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so um, we're closing public participation at seven twenty-seven? Um, Madam State Monitor, do you have a report for us? No State Monitor's report. Um, so at this point, um, we're going to ask.
Can we have a motion for acceptance of minutes on page A one, A through C?
I'll move it.
I'll move it second.
Moved by Miss Lozinski, second by Miss Etienne. Any comments, questions? Miss Lozinski?
Yes.
Is that the end? Ms. Abas Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for a consistent agenda? At this time, uh, I'm requesting a consent agenda for pages B one to B six and all attachments.
I'll move it. Second, Angela.
Any questions, comments?
Roll call please, Ms. Hastings.
Miss Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Abas Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
I'm going to abstain because I was not able to review everything.
Okay. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes, I'm abstaining on B two, letter G.
Thank you. Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
And Miss Etienne?
Yes, I'm abstaining on B three, letter I.
Thank you. All items carry.
All right, Ms. Hastings, would you like to ask for a consistent agenda?
Yes, Madam President. Could I have a motion for all items, C one, number one, C four, number fourteen?
Move it.
Move.
Moved by Miss Etienne, second by Miss Abas Anderson. Any comments or questions? Is that the end?
Yes.
Ms. Abas Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
I'm staying unable to review everything.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes, I'm staying on JCPN, New Jersey American Water, um Verizon, and anything to do with reimbursements to me.
Thank you. Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Miss Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion's carry. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to be going into executive session. Uh, whereas the Open Public Speaking Act allows for executives for the exclusion from discussion at the pu, at the public particip, at the public portion part of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made, made and will be made such, made and will make such discussions public when the proper conclusion has been reached. Now therefore, to be resolved that on March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose as outlined and described below, upon return, action may be taken. Um, we're going to talk about certain personnel matters. Um, I think that was it.
Yep.
That's it.
If we could, if we could just advise the public um on how long we may be in executive session?
In five, ten minutes.
Okay. There's no action being taken either, correct?
No action.
Yeah, um, actually, uh, Madam President did say that action may be taken. Um, so if we're changing that, that's fine too.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is it going to be a conflict for me?
I'm not quite sure what you're talking about, but um, the minute I hear something, Ms. Breach, I will, um, I will look you where.
No, no.
Okay, no.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so at this time, you guys, the Zoom link is um in your email. Please log off of here and then go to Zoom.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is there specific language and um that we should use with uh this motion?
Uh, it'd be a motion to accept.
Okay. Okay, can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Hastings?
Okay, we're going to reopen the meeting. Ms. Abas Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Breach? Uh, Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Mr. LaRocca?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? Miss Lozinski?
Here.
And Miss Etienne?
Here.
All right, at this time, I would like um to have a motion to accept Madam Superintendent's resignation.
And that's uh June thirtieth or June, correct? In fact, it's June?
June thirtieth, five P M.
I'll move it.
Second?
Your second? Okay. We have a move by Miss Lozinski, second by Miss Etienne. Any questions or comments?
Roll call, please, Ms. Hastings.
Miss Lozinski?
Yes.
Is that the end?
Yes.
Ms. Abas Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach? Not with us. Ms. Cook?
With regret, yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Regrettably, yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
And Mr. Saunders? Not with us. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any objections? Our meeting is closed.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Stay well.
Good night.
Good night. Stay blessed.